Thank you. Welcome to everyone. It's five o'clock on the nineteenth of August, 2024. I'm calling this City Council, Special Call City Council Meeting to Order. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene recess or realign the regular session or call it Executive Session or order business at any time prior to adjournment. I'm going to break a little bit from the agenda, and I'm going to ask the Reverend Bernie Jackson if she will come to the podium and give her invocation. If y'all will please rise.
Almighty God, I come this evening, God, lifting up the city of Bastrop and the citizens, Lord God, in this body that has been elected, God, to help us live in a governed society. I ask, God, that you would visit each and every one of us individually and as a group, God, and help us to examine all the things that we do, and will they stand in the light of grace and mercy? I ask, God, that you would have us to reflect on what is good for the majority. And then, God, I ask that you would bless each and every one of them, God, because they volunteer to serve. Let us be thankful for that, Lord God, and bless them. But Father, I know they're in need of your direction and your divine guidance. I count it joy, God. I count it as a victory that you are the God that you are, and I hear prayers. And I know, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Y'all may be seated. We'll move on to the next order of, on our agenda, to Citizen Comments. Do we have any more before I start? Madam Secretary?
No, Mayor.
All right. We have, the first two is scheduled to speak is Alex Hindley. He's asked to speak first, so you're getting your wish. If you will state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Alex Hindley. I live at 313 Cedar Street. This is the third time I've spoken here, and it's always been about the quorum. But after hearing and speaking with, I think it's okay to say, Mr. Kirkland, very pleasant conversation, I feel like I have a lot of insight on this. And I understand that it seems like it's come around to, everybody's mostly on board with this now, which I'm happy to hear. I wanted to speak out against a couple of exceptions that were put in. I'm pro 3A, as it was suggested by the Charter Review Commission, which I was a part of. Even if we remove the word "voting" from voting member, I think that's fine. I think maybe it lends to more transparency, not less. But the exceptions of the special meetings such as this, or serving on, special words aren't with me right now. I understand that Mrs. Fossler resigned from that position today. That was kind of up for question, just to make that an easier call. And it seems like that is the right way to handle this for transparency sake, is to just limit the amount of current City Council members serve on special boards like that. And then, for the special meetings, being able to call, for two to be able to call a special meeting, I understand that that worries a handful of you, and I even understand why. But I feel like the ultimate down the line of that is you still will have to have four people to hold a meeting, and it will still have to be posted within, for seventy-two hours ahead of time, giving the current City Council ample time, as much time as they ever have, to be sure that they can be included in this meeting. And so, for those reasons, I feel like, as it's written, minus voting, the word voting, I think it should be the one that is considered. I also understand that it might be in the plans to suggest another option that was also suggested during the Charter Review Commission with the citizens, and it was shot down there, shot down, maybe not the right word, but voted upon and declined, was to add a sixth City Council member. And actually, I kind of like that idea. I feel like the timing of it is bad for the city right now. I feel like because the whole topic at hand has been transparency, I feel like it lends itself to being seen as confusing. I think too many options, too many options for the voters. Voter confusion or just being bludgeoned with too many options. And I think everybody in this room is pretty well informed, but I think the average person who does vote, as I was not that long ago, just doesn't know enough. And unless we can educate them, I think we should just A or B, I feel like, for now. And I think maybe the next time, bring up the sixth City Council member as an option, as long as we can create another one of these spots. I don't know if we can work a sixth person in here. Anyway, that's it. I have seven seconds. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. Next person scheduled to speak is Maria Montoya Staden. Welcome. Same spill, three minutes. Name and address.
Okay, my name is Maria Montoya Staden. I'm at seventeen oh seven Pecan Street. And I'd like for us to err on the side of transparency. I'm going to say transparency a lot in two minutes, and I think, or three minutes. No, I'm actually going to do two. And I think that a lot of people here probably use that word a lot. What I mean by it is that, in tonight's context, transparency means being open and honest. Erring on the side of transparency is similar to, like, erring on the side of caution. It means that we'd rather be too transparent and risk maybe revealing more than necessary than not transparent enough and risk, you know, media finding out later and creating yet another story, which disenfranchises citizens and damages the city reputation even more. And I think all of you are very much in support of keeping and making our reputation even better than what it is. We have three options here, and if you vote for Option B, you're erring on the side of transparency, and it's one of those fundamental components of democratic government, and it addresses the rights of citizens to know about activities of their local government. And what are those benefits of openness and transparency? When the public sees the inner workings of government, they inherently trust it a little bit more. Yes, sometimes it's like watching sausage being made. It's messy, and sometimes, frankly, unappetizing, but it does build trust. And it builds trust and confidence in our elected officials when we see them struggle through difficult situations and together hammer out a solution. There are already many ways in where our city is open and transparent, and this piece that you'll be voting on will bring us closer to being an even more open and transparent city. And tonight, I urge you to err on the side of transparency.
Thank you, ma'am. The rest of our comments are items specific. Madam City Secretary, do we have anybody who wishes to speak in Citizen Comments?
No, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to Item 3A. Consider an act upon the proposed Charter Review Commission amendments to the Charter, any additional requests by the City Council, and possibly calling for a special election on November 5, 2024. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a long-running item. I was still trying to correct the slides, because I think the city attorney has now sent us version F or G. I'm not sure which just came through. I think F, right? F. So we'll go, I don't have that. So the first reading will occur on October, August, and October should be strictly. Second reading should be anticipated to occur today. Propositions F and G have been removed. Proposition H has been modified, and Proposition K, which is formerly M, has been modified. Those are the city attorney's notes that are in red and underlined in your packet. These are the actual amendments, and I'll see if I can increase that font. Proposition A is Section 2.03 of the Charter to be amended to conform with state law by removing reference to the city's power to annex territory without consent of the inhabitants. That is state of Texas. We do not have the power to unilaterally annex. Proposition B, shall the Charter be amended to conform with state law, creating a vacancy on the City Council when a council member announces their candidacy for certain elected offices, and the unexpired term of the council member exceeds one year and thirty days, also known as resign to run. Shall Section 3.16 of the Charter be amended to reflect the fact that codes of technical regulations are available to the public digitally and free of charge, again preempted by the state of Texas? Proposition D, shall Section 3.17B of the Charter be amended to reflect the fact that ordinances are available to the public digitally and free of charge, again required by the state of Texas? Proposition E, shall Section 5.02 of the Charter be amended to conform with state law by stating that the term of the Office of Municipal Court Judges shall be provided for by ordinance? Proposition F, shall Sections 14.03 and 14.04 of the Charter be repealed in their entirety as outdated transitional provisions that are now irrelevant? Proposition G, shall the Charter be amended throughout to replace gender-specific language with gender-neutral terminology? Proposition H, shall Section 3.01 of the Charter be amended to clarify that the mayor appoints candidates to serve on boards, committees, commissions, task forces, et cetera, and the council confirms, considers confirmation of the appointment? Proposition I, shall Section 3.07 of the Charter be amended to compensate the mayor at a rate of $400 per month and council members at a rate of $250 per month. That is a change. Proposition J, shall Section 3.09 of the Charter be amended to mandate that the City Council must appoint a Charter Review Commission every six years? Proposition K, which is the longest one and probably the topic of most debate, will be on the next page. Proposition L, shall Section 4.1 of the Charter be amended to remove the requirement that the City Manager must reside within the city limits? Proposition K, there are three options to be presented. First option, shall Section 3.13 of the Charter be amended to specify that four members of the council shall constitute a quorum to do business, but three voting members of the council shall constitute a quorum for all other purposes of compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Alternatively, shall Section 3.13 of the Charter be amended to specify that four members of the council shall constitute a quorum to do business, but three members of the council shall constitute a quorum for all other purposes of compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act? Alternatively, shall Section 3.13 of the Charter be amended to specify that four members of the council shall constitute a quorum to do business, but three members of the council shall constitute a quorum for all other purposes of compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, except when attending a meeting of a committee appointed by the council or discussing, calling a special meeting? That's it.
Counsel, City Manager has laid this item out. Comments, questions? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes, thank you. On Proposition I, I just wanted everyone to understand on the pay increase for council, that will not be effective immediately for everyone. It's only when a council member, if and when a council member is reelected. So I don't want anyone to think that we are voting ourself this big pay increase, because that's not what this is about. It's to set forward for future councils.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other comment or questions? If not, we're going to move to the public comments here. The first person scheduled to speak is Jeffrey Staden. He's not here, and he is wishing to voice support for Amendment B. Next person is Herb Goldsmith, who does not wish to speak. He is wishing to, he does not support any edits submitted by City Council. Next person does not wish to speak, Ellen Marie Tanner, nineteen eleven Maine, wishes to voice her support for Option B. Next person who's asked to speak on this item is Robin Pisen, Sorry. Pisen. I had three choices, and I picked one.
No worries. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I had the pleasure of serving on the Charter Review Committee. And even though it was a different kind of schedule, you know, originally, we were going to meet once a month. It was going to be over four months. And then, because of these changes, we had to meet on a much faster schedule. And I really appreciated the input that people provided and the kind of thoughtful discussions that we had. I was a little surprised to see that there was an agenda item that was suggesting options other than what the Charter Review Committee provided, because I thought our work and the work we had been asked to do was to propose language for use in making that amendment. So clearly, I'm, you know, I'm voicing support for the language that we crafted as a part of the, all the input that was gathered and the work that was put in. And I just wanted to come and reiterate that that option is the one that I support. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Next person scheduled to speak on this agenda item is David Bragg. Name and address. Don't do that.
Mayor Nelson, Members of the Council, I appreciate the chance to be here again. As Chairman of the Charter Review Commission, I repeat the request last time that y'all adopt our recommendations. I will say, however, with respect to Councilmember Plunkett's revision of K, what is now K, obviously, the Charter Review Commission has not had a chance to review that. I'm real confident that the Charter Review Commission would enthusiastically support that, based on the conversations we had during the meetings. And so, that's fine. I'm actually here to speak about Proposition KC. Just as I would be enthusiastically feeling supportive of that, I'm enthusiastically against Proposition KC. This proposal would allow a voting majority of the council to operate under a veil of secrecy, whether intentional or not. Under this proposal, a three-person majority of the council could appoint themselves to a committee and then conduct the people's business entirely in secret, showing up at a public council meeting only to vote on what they already had decided to do. There's not even anything to prevent the committee from meeting secretly with only one side of an issue. If I'm wrong in what the plain language says, then please correct me. But I believe I'm right. And if I am, and you vote to include this amendment on the ballot, I think you have a duty to make sure the public is told that, under the amendment, a majority of the councils can simply appoint a committee of themselves, and by doing so, nullify the Open Records, Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act has been around for nearly sixty years. It was based on the belief, and I'm quoting here, "The inherent right of Texans to govern themselves depends on their ability to observe how public officials conduct the people's business." That's the heart and soul of the Open Meetings Act. When secrecy is required, the Open Meetings Act already allows exceptions. I saw on the executive session tonight, or that there will be an executive session tonight, to discuss the duties of the city attorney. There are similar secrecy exceptions for lawsuits and purchasing property and things of that nature. So it already deals with the need for secrecy. The argument, though, has been made, what if three council members of the council are needed on a committee? My question would be, why? Your choice now is to decide which is more important, the public's right to see and hear what you are doing, or your desire to have three council members on a committee instead of one or two? That should be, in my view, an easy choice. If you believe the majority of the council should not be allowed to meet in secret, to discuss city business, then you must oppose Proposition KC. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate all of our citizens' comments. Madam City Secretary, is there anybody else scheduled to speak or wishes to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, the City Manager has laid it out. We've heard from the public comments. Councilmember Meyer?
Yes, I just have a question for our attorney, Allen. Under Proposition H, the mayor appoints, am I, we cannot appoint ourselves. Is that correct, to committees, commissions? Because that's what Proposition H is about.
Sorry, Councilmember Meyer, Mayor, Councilmembers, Proposition H does not change the mayor's appointment authority to boards, committees, commissions, and task forces. It just verifies that the City Council either confirms or considers confirmation of its competence, or the council decides itself.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, of course, I've given this a lot of thought. You know, we all have for a long time. And I, this has never been about communicating in secret. This has always been about producing the best outcome for our citizens. Sometimes, to do that, one needs to get opinions from more than one person who is, who's in the same bunker that you're in, you know, who's having to make the same decision that you're making. So, you know, given the fact that, and, okay, and also, with the, in C, with the discussion, calling a special meeting, the reason that that is in there is because, in order to call a special meeting, it takes three people. And you can't possibly call a special meeting without discussing it first. I mean, that, it's just obvious, it seems to me. But regardless, what, I'm going to make a motion that I think I've figured out a way to get everybody what they want. Well, at least as much as possible. So, first of all, I'm actually okay with either C or B, but what I would like to do is add the words, and I'll, I've got this written down. I can pass it. Where it says, "Members of council shall constitute a quorum to do business," but, and this is where it changes, "the total membership of council minus three shall constitute a quorum for all other purposes," and so forth and so on. If we do that, along with adding a proposition that in 3.02, changes five to six council members, and then, of course, that would necessitate that you change 3.02B to move the "and" to after five and put a six after that, then I believe that would give, that would work. Whether either one of them passed or not, it would give the citizens the ability to decide whether additional representation would be beneficial. It would give us the opportunity to have a little bit more diversity on the council here. And again, it works if one passes and the other one doesn't. It works if they both fail. It works if they both pass. So I think that's, I think that's the best I can do.
Councilmember Fossler?
He made a motion, right?
We have a motion.
I'll wait.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Plunkett, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. Any further discussion? Councilmember Fossler?
I've talked to so many people for the past year and a half about this, but mainly the past week. And the resounding voice that's coming from them is transparency, period. No exceptions. No funny math. No, in this circumstance, this, like, it's transparency, period.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
So I, this message has been brought to us from a bunch of different avenues. It's been brought to us from the Charter Review Committee. It's been brought to us by people sending us emails, people calling us on the phone. And the thing that has been repeated a number of times, and the thing that has resonated with me, is to maintain both spirit of the law and letter of the law compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. And several things have been sent stating that, you know, other organizations state that because of the structure of our charter and having a voting majority of people meet, that would violate the intent of the Open Meetings Act. And so, I fully support the concept of fixing this. And so, it occurs to me that we should give the voters the opportunity to decide how they want to fix it. And in any of those cases, the voters would have the opportunity to fix it in one of two ways. One way is that if they change just the section of the charter that lowers the quorum, then we would have five council members, or six, including the mayor, and the quorum would be reduced, and it would be materially the same as what the Charter Committee produced as an output. And that output would produce both technical and spirit of the law compliance with the Open Meetings Act. If the voters decided on the separate item to add a sixth council member, then that number would be four. And so, the charter, the quorum would be four. And thus, that would also maintain both letter of the law and intent behind the law, compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. And so, some of you know me. Not many of you do necessarily, but I study the rules, and I am a rule follower in that I read about it. I understand it. I try to understand it at its depth. And, you know, as such, you know, even the comment about the three council members being able to meet, that's not even the right way to put it, three council members being able to call a meeting. That's what our rules of procedure say. And so, if we make that against the rules by our changes, then three council members can no longer call a meeting. You could resolve that by putting in an exception, or you can resolve it by saying that two council members may call a special meeting. And I'm fine, honestly, with either. If we want to do it without exceptions, we could, we could lower the number for a special meeting to two. The, I did ask the city attorney a question today about this specific item, and that was because there is a, I had some vague recollection that the prior law that was struck down in terms of the walking quorum law was struck down because it was unconstitutionally vague, because in that particular set of facts, the council members, it required three of them to call a meeting in their city as well. And the way that they were interpreting the Open Meetings Act said that the three couldn't talk to each other to call that special meeting, and that was part of why it was vague and why they struck it down. And so, I was trying to just simply avoid the appearance of conflict or an actual conflict associated with trying to do something that our rules of procedure direct us to, to call a special meeting. If we want to handle that with two people? If we want to handle that with two people, no problem. We can remove the exception. Mr. Bragg, I appreciate your feedback on the subcommittees. It was not my intent to discuss the things that you logically pointed out. It was not my intent to propose that we would be creating new committees, but rather, we already had committees, and they were already operating, and they had three council members on them. And those committees, I'm not a member of them. I haven't spoken to the people that are on them about that business, but I just assume in good faith that they're doing good work. And so, I was wanting not to interrupt that. But now that Councilmember Fosler has stepped down from that committee, I think I just heard that. Is that true? Okay. So, now, we only have two people on that committee. And so, honestly, then, there's no reason to even have that exception either. And so, yeah, that's kind of what I have to say about it, is I appreciate sincerely all of the public input and feedback on all of these items, because it brought me along to your position, which was, we need to identify ways to bring about both technical and, you know, spirit of the law compliance with the Open Meetings Act. And so, these proposals meet that and let the voters have a say in which way they want to go about doing it. I personally have a preference for adding the sixth council member, and my reason for that is because I believe with a greater number of individuals that can participate in things like committees and other discussions that we're having, that it promotes efficiency. It promotes a better final product for our citizens. As you'll note, the making of the sausage, the debate, the discussion, the people listening to it, once we get past the, I don't know where it is exactly, but the 15 to 45-minute mark, somewhere in that ballpark, after discussing one particular item, the natives on Facebook just start getting pretty obscene in their comments. And they don't really want to sit and watch us talk about these things at length. And I don't really have an explanation for that, because that's transparency, is having that discussion and debate before the vote, and it's got to be done here. So, I don't know. Maybe we need additional workshops. Maybe we need, you know, to intentionally schedule additional discussions where we can speak a little bit less formally, though it's still an open meeting. It would still be broadcast, you know, on Facebook. I wouldn't, you know, that's fine. But I... Anyway, that's just kind of what I see, is that I appreciate the community's input. I appreciate your input, Mr. Bragg. I appreciate the words that you've said, how you've chosen to say them, and both from here during the meeting itself and in your other communications to us. It brought me to a different position than I started at, and I want to say thank you for that. And, yeah, I'll release the floor for now.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I... We remove the avoidance of doing something. The way to remove the avoidance of doing something is to have the discussion on the dais. I go back to the statement that I made at the last council meeting. The time for council discussion is on the dais. That is an... If you want to get a different perspective from a council member, you get that on the dais. That's why we're here. We're here to have a discussion about the agenda items. The problem with being able to meet with half of the council to discuss it is you're not getting different perspectives. You're calling somebody who pretty much has the same perspective you have and figuring out what it appears to the public to be, how you guys will vote. And that's what's happening, and that is the perception in the public, and that's the reality. So, if you want to avoid the appearance of doing that, then go to the two. Go to the two. Three is a quorum, and have the discussions on the dais. You're gonna get the different perspectives from each of us. The issue, then, is, are you listening to the different perspectives of each council member? Or are you already coming with your mind made up and unwilling to compromise? We formed a committee. No council member served on that committee. The task of that committee was to come up with propositions that would not be influenced by council members, so that it would represent a committee of residents that live in... or a committee that was filled with residents and their opinion on what they think would be best for the charter. If we just come back and override what that committee presented to us, then we are then influencing the committee's decisions. And I don't think that that's right. We are more... We should be more than capable of having a discussion on the dais and giving our personal opinion about an agenda item, and each of us should be willing to take it into consideration. And that has not been happening. Adding another option at this point, I think, is too late in the game. We need to vote on what the committee has presented to us, decide of the options that were given to us. We're being presented with another option on the dais? I can't even understand what he was actually proposing, because we got it today. That wasn't something that was given to us prior to this meeting, for us to be able to dissect that as an option. I know there's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. I think that it's gonna be... It's confusing to me. I think it's confusing to the public. I think we need to stick with the three propositions that we have and decide on one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer.
Thanks. So, first, I would like to 100% agree with Councilmember Fosler on transparency, because that's all I've ever been about. And if there's any confusion, as some may say that the perception is to not follow Open Meetings Act and not be transparent, as I've said before, that's not who I am. I'll never be that. That's not who we are. It makes me sad, and I want to fix this, because I don't want anyone in this town that we represent to think that we want to do anything but be transparent. So, whatever we have to do to prove that to you and let the voters decide, let's do it, because it is about the voters. We are forgetting, this is about the people of the city. The voters always need to speak, and they are the ones that decide, because we work for you, the voters. I've always said that. So, that being said, I do have a question, because I am confused, and I'm thinking maybe some people watching might be confused, because I'm not really clear. So, Councilmember Plunkett, if you wouldn't mind, are you offering another option? Is that what we're doing here?
No. I guess what I'm asking is that we add some language in... And I guess, like I said, I'm fine with B or C. But for, you know, since Councilmember Kirkland indicated he's okay with B, and I already indicated I'm okay with B, then all it would do is add... Here, I'm just gonna hand you this, but I'll still read it. The total number to... "Council shall constitute a quorum to do..." "Four members of the council shall constitute a quorum to do business." But, and then, this is where the change happens. "The total number of membership of council minus three shall constitute a quorum." That way, if the proposal to go from five to six passes, then the quorum is three for that purpose. And if, I'm sorry, fails, sorry, it would be three. If it passes, then it would... Then it would be four. And then, it would be the same as the Open Meetings Act.
So, I do understand that, but where's the six coming in? Is that a whole different thing?
Yeah, that would be a separate proposition.
That's what I'm gonna... Thank you.
That way, the voters can vote either one of them up or down.
Thank you.
And then, they would still work.
That's what I was...
That was the work I was trying to figure out how to do, is to word it in such a way that it would work regardless of how the voters voted.
Can I just clarify something for the folks at home and for everybody else? Because Staff and I are going back and forth on what was the original recommendation. That's up on the screen. That is what the committee voted on. That exact language. And I think the last time we were here, I didn't realize we were A, B, and C. I thought the word "voting" was the only thing that we were going to be discussing. But apparently, there's been communication among council members and the city attorney.
Certainly, city manager, mayor, and council. At the end of our last discussion, I was asked to bring forward a new draft that contained three alternatives, encapsulating the three alternatives that council discussed at the last meeting, for you to decide one of those tonight or a fourth option.
Councilmember Fosler.
It was to that. That last one, C, was to reflect the change that we had just passed in the rules of procedure. So, that was what that third option was, because we did pass that in the rules of procedure, that very same language, last meeting. So, that's why it came back as C. Not that I support it, but that's why it's there. First of all, calling a special meeting requires no discussion among council members. It's the current process, and the charter is written, a written request to the city secretary by three council members. And the current process, I mean, if, like that office does all the time, if two people want to submit a discuss, that's fine, and submit a written request for a meeting, she would buy blind copies, send out a poll to the rest of council, and ask if anyone wants to co-sign that or support it. Like, that process has worked for a long time. There's no reason to discuss calling a special meeting. So, that's already handled. That's not something that needs to be fixed.
Or call the mayor and ask him to call a special meeting.
Correct.
Which requires just one call.
Yeah. I'm extremely uncomfortable adding a separate option, a separate proposition, tonight on the second reading. It feels like slipping in something that the Charter Review Commission, I mean, they were... They are an incredible brain trust as far as language goes, and really, like, digging into the unintended consequences of each word change of every single one. And like, I'm extremely uncomfortable slipping anything in last minute. And even though the words may make some sense, this stinks. Like, if it makes sense, why does it stink?
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I also appreciate you bringing this up, city manager, because I watched and recall, and I'm glad you brought this up, that the... There was a discussion to add a sixth council member during that meeting, and it was shot down, overwhelmingly shot down during the committee meeting. So, that was not the will of the committee. And then, I want to go back again to the fact that we're still talking about this. And like the city manager, I thought that the voting, the word "voting" was gonna be the issue that we're discussing. I agree with Councilmember Fosler, throwing another option in the mix right now. It's not fair to council, who wasn't aware that this discussion was even going on until today, having prepared and reviewed and discussed with citizens the three options that were on the table, to throw in a fourth option last minute. It seems unfair. It is unfair to the council and to the public. We have three options on the table. Councilmember Kirkland has said he's good with option B. I'm good with option B. Councilmember Plunkett just said he would be good with B or C. I think we should stick to what's on the table right now with the options that we have and not throw in another option that actually requires more discussion than the time that we have tonight.
Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. So, I just wanted, Sylvie, just to clarify, at the last meeting, the option C, I was the one that asked Allen to do that for the committee. So, that was me, and he wrote it down that time. So, that's why we have three there. Councilmember Plunkett, so on your proposal and the way you have this worded, it is actually you're... You are saying you support B. However, you've just changed the language to make it "however" in the future?
I changed the language so that it would work regardless of whether or not the proposition to go from six, from five to six council members passed or not.
Okay.
That's the reason I did it, so it would work regardless of...
And what is your motion right now on the floor?
Is to add the proposition, to change the number of council members, and to go with... And again, I'm fine with B with the stated language change, so that it would be flexible regardless of how many council members we had.
Thank you. And I went to both of the meetings that the Charter Committee had, so I do appreciate y'all. And I had great discussion with so many of y'all, and I've talked to quite a few since you met, and I appreciate you. And I do remember, and I don't know what the count was, I've got it in my notebook, but I don't have it in front of me. Mr. Bragg, it was pretty overwhelmingly to not add a sixth member. Am I right on that? Okay. That's what I thought I'd written down, but I just want to make sure, so... Okay, so I think I'm clear now.
And just to help you with that, and the reason I thought it was important to give the choices, because, and I wasn't there, and the reason I wasn't there is because I didn't want it to seem as though I was trying to, you know, coerce the committee into doing anything. So, it seemed to me, from talking to some of the committee members, that it was, you know, somewhat of an either-or proposition, and this gives the people, the voters, the, you know, the ultimate flexibility. And that's why I wanted to do, to have both, so that the voters could choose. I mean, again, we have very little representation from the other side of the river, and that's where our population center is growing. We've always had a hard time recruiting candidates from over there. And, you know, this could only increase our ability to do it. Our city's growing, you know, leaps and bounds, and to wait, have to wait another couple of years before we could increase the, you know, representation from those, you know, other groups, you know, I think would be a shame. And again, if people don't want it, then they don't want it. They don't have to vote for it. I mean, it's super simple. It's, do you want another council member or not? It's nothing confusing about it. It's the least... It will be the least confusing proposition on the, you know, on ballot, I'm sure. So, I just, I fail to see the harm in it.
And then, my question is for Allen. Allen, would it be the proposition or the proposal to increase, as Councilmember Plunkett has said, would it be six more years before we'd have the opportunity to change that in the charter? To add another member?
Mayor, council, state law says we cannot amend our charter more frequently than every two years. What the current proposition before you would do on the issue of charter review is to say that the council will appoint a charter review commission every six years. That doesn't mean you can't do so more frequently. That also doesn't mean that in six years, a charter review commission will have any adds they want to make.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I fail to see the harm in keeping it at the options that the committee presented to us. The committee discussed adding a sixth member in both meetings, and in both meetings, they overwhelmingly said no to a sixth member. So, we're arguing whether or not we should just do it in case time comes and maybe we need more representation. If we were a cohesive council, I might agree with that. But unfortunately, we're not, and we're arguing over whether or not two people, we should be able to allow at least three people on half of a body of council to have discussions without it being a walking quorum. There is no harm in to making three a walking quorum. I just don't see the argument. Again, I think people are ready for us to move on. I think the committee worked hard to come up with the propositions that they came up with, and that they did so in the spirit of council accepting their propositions. I can, adding another one in, that has not been discussed, that option has not been discussed, and what's being presented and the option to change, the committee didn't want. And the public doesn't want, at large, the public doesn't want. We've had how many citizens write in saying they wanted a walking quorum to be three? We've had how many citizens come and sit in this room and say they wanted a walking quorum to be three? What will it take for us to listen to the citizens and let the voters decide? Thank you.
Thank you. You know, transparency is the key. You know, option B is obviously more transparent than what the Freedom of Information Foundation stated. You know, and this really wasn't an issue until June of 2022. And this wordsmithing to circumvent the issue that's before us is somewhat disturbing. But we do want our citizens to speak. And our citizens from a council-appointed committee that was given onerous voting requirements voted overwhelmingly to to pass the quorum issue. I believe the vote was 11 to 2. And I think that was a great cross-section of our citizens that participated quite well in that group. To date, I have not been contacted by more than one city council member on any particular item that was before this body for discussion and action. So I've not been able to to experience or even push off the idea of having a walking quorum. Of course, I don't have a vote. And so with myself and two city council members discuss something, there would not be a quorum because it was going to be two voting members. But again, I've not been contacted by more than one city council member on any issue that's before us. But I'm concerned about this wordsmithing that we're doing right now is going to be confusing to our citizens and and quite frankly unfair. Councilmember Fosser, your light is on.
Mayor, would you be willing to open up another round of citizen comments since this is like completely new information for everyone in the room apart from two people?
I would, I would love to, but unfortunately, we have a motion on the floor right now. It'd be, it'd be very difficult for us to do that unless the motion dies and then we can, or the motion is voted down, and then we can move on. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. So the one thing I absolutely do know, as Councilmember Lee says, people have spoken to council members, and they have, and they call. The one thing I know between all of y'all here and everybody watching, and and I hope most of us, is we're tired of this. We want to get along. We want to get business done in the city. And this fragmentation and the arguing and the perception of arguing and the perception of of not being transparent, we're all tired of this. So what I want to do is the best thing for y'all. I want to listen to you. I want you to vote on this and decide what it is you want for your city because it's your city. So I just want this to end. I want us to move on and let's get down to business.
Councilmember Lee. I'm happy to hear Councilmember Meyer bring up the fragmentation and moving on. I had offered, last week, I had offered an olive branch and have not received any comment back. But that being said, I see no other comments or no other lights. We have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Plunkett and a second by Mayor Protem Kirkland. Mayor Protem Kirkland, you have a comment or question?
Yeah, can we repeat the motion, please?
I'd say if you'll allow me to finish as a, as the presiding officer, Councilmember Plunkett, since, since we've had some discussion on this, can you repeat the motion so that everybody understands what we're voting on, everybody in the audience understands what you're suggesting that we do?
Okay, I'm suggesting add a proposition. I believe it would be numbered M. Is that correct? Alan?
Yes, Mayor and Council. If we have a proposition increasing the size of the council, that will be proposition M. As a Mary.
Thank you. So proposition M would read 3.02A of the charter, change the number five to the number six. 3.02B would read four, five, and six, and replace, except as otherwise set forth in the transitional provisions hereafter detailed, with the new created place six, will share a regular election cycle with place three and the mayor. Because it seemed to me that the except as otherwise set forth in the transitional provisions. And since we're taking out the provisional transitional provisions with another proposition, that it only seemed logical to take that out. And we needed to do something with the election schedule of place there, of this new place. And then also that we would go to option B on item K, and after the word but, add, change it to the total number of members of council minus three rather than a specific number.
Okay, council. Councilmember Plunkett has attempted to explain the motion. I, I, I for one am still not clear on this. Is, does the people who are voting, are they clear on on this? I get a nod of no and a nod of yes. You don't understand the motion? I'm not calling for the vote. I'm just making sure you understand the motion.
I understand it enough.
Okay, the motion has been made by Councilmember Plunkett. The, has been seconded by Mayor Protem Kirkland. We've had an appropriate discussion. I certainly hope the listening audience understands this. With no further comment or discussion noted, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Councilmember Meyer?
No.
Councilmember Fosser?
No.
Thank you, council. Motion has failed. I have, we still have this item on the floor. Do I hear another motion? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes, I make a motion to accept option C.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer to accept option C. Going once, going twice. I'm going to declare motion dies for lack of a second. Council, Councilmember Fosser.
I'd like to make a motion to accept version B. And thank you to the Charter Commission for working under language. I do no longer want to quibble over the voting or not. So I am making a motion.
Second.
For B.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fosser. I have a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Fosser.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
No.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes four to one, the dissenting vote being Councilmember Lee. Wait. It's a public hearing. I mean, it's a public meeting. Please, the dissenting vote was Councilmember Meyer. Thank you, council. We will move to item 3B. Consider an act on Charter Amendment decriminal-
May I interrupt you and ask one question?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt the flow of everything. I was listening and taking notes. And at the beginning of our conversation of the overall charter review, Councilmember Meyer made a disclaimer and asked me to help clarify that if the voters approve proposition I and council and mayor compensation increases, will it affect any of the incumbents? And the answer is no. With Councilmember Meyer and other ask questions like that, that usually means to me you've heard feedback or questions on that point, and we haven't had a chance to talk about it yet. We could add to the proposition that's right now proposition I. We could add the language that's actually going to be in the charter that was approved by the Charter Commission, which states sitting mayors and council members at the time of a compensation increase shall be ineligible to receive the additional funds until reelected. That may spin off some of the questions that you've been receiving. Is that something that council would like to add to the ballot language?
Yes. Do I need to make a motion for that?
In the spirit of what we're doing tonight, please?
Yes, please. Yes.
I would like to make a motion for prop, to amend proposition, or to add to proposition I to state exactly what our city attorney just said.
Isn't that state law already, though, Alan?
It is, City Manager, you're correct. It's state law in the statute that pay increases will not go into effect until reelected for general law cities. It does not say that for home rule cities.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes, passes unanimously. Lee?
I have another motion.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
I don't actually think that our compensation should be increased. And I don't think I'm going to win this, but I motion that we strike that item from the election.
Second.
We have a motion from Mayor Protem Kirkland. We have a second from Councilmember Fosser. Any other discussion? Councilmember Meyer?
Okay, Councilmember Kirkland, could you tell me what you just said? What is it you want to?
No, I. So we get a, you know, a paltry sum today. And I donate all of that to the Good Neighbor Fund that the Food Pantry gives out to help pay electric bills. And I just feel like this is supposed to be a community service role. And raising the pay by, you know, to $250 a month doesn't really change, change it for me. And so I just, I'm inclined to not raise the pay of council or not to vote to raise the pay of council, which is why I struggled on the last vote because I was saying yes to something that I didn't want to fundamentally do, but I didn't want to say no to it, thinking that we should raise our salaries now, which a no vote would have implied. So that I just sort of did the gymnastics in my head and came up with, okay, I'm going to vote yes on that, but then bring up the topic of potentially not doing it at all, which is what we're, and I was surprised to get a second, so.
And I appreciate that. I really do. However, our charter should reflect the future. And we're all not going to be sitting up here one day. That might make a lot of y'all happy or not, you might cry. I don't know. But I'm just saying, in thinking of future councils, it, just from my experience, it takes a lot of time. And and we have, all of us, and maybe in the future there won't be, but I have to reorganize my whole schedule, which I'm happy to do because as my husband reminds me, you chose it. And I did. And I wouldn't change anything at all. But in thinking of future councils, I just want to be fair to the future councils. That's my reasoning.
Council, I will remind you that we just took a vote after some discussion on on this item. And now we appear to be going in and piecemealing a couple of these things. I'm not opposed to the, to the motion, but it, let's, let's, let's have some regard relative to the piecemealing. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, this has always been a hard one for me, too, because, I mean, and I always said this, you know, when people say, oh, $150 a month, why do y'all, you know, do it for that? Obviously, you're not doing it for that. None of us are. And, you know, but then my retort to that was, yeah, but how do you fix it? If you're going to make it a number that's worth, you know, even walking down to the bank to deposit, you know, if you're going to make it worth what it's worth, you know, I mean, we're talking, you know, more than a 10x, you know, kind of an increase. And I'm not willing to do that either. So I don't know how to fix this. You know, which is why I've, you know, I'm ambivalent about, you know, the two, it's, you know, it, it makes, I don't think it changes a thing, you know, other than a meaningless number. So, so I guess I'm happy to go with the majority of council on this one.
Councilmember Fosser.
Any other time in place, I would probably support this for future councils. I just think the timing of it with all the headlines is just like, is just too funny. So I wouldn't want us to put us in that situation. It's not, it's not a good time.
Councilmember Meyer?
Last statement on this, and then we're going to move on because we've been doing this too long. But I remember Mr. Bragg, too, at the meetings, this was a very interesting discussion. And one of the options that I'm so thankful that y'all did not put up to us was for the council to decide what you're gonna get. Because my gosh, we would be running out of town. And we don't want to do that. So thank you for that. That's all I'm gonna say.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. So I do think that an increase is warranted because I, I, again, spend at least 15 to 20 hours before a council meeting preparing the time that, and I'm, I'm a, what I call a peasant at times. I have an eight to five job, barely, you know, living paycheck to paycheck. And there are times where meetings are scheduled and I, I have to take off and I don't get paid. And my, that $65 that we get after taxes doesn't make up for the $240 that I lose for some of the responsibilities that council requires. I think that we are all here. I know we are all here because we want to do what we think is best for the city of Bastrop. However, we all, we do want other people to run after we leave this dais. And there are people that will be taking time away from their families and their jobs that, you know, this isn't going to make up for it. You're right, Councilmember Plunkett. However, it is a step to move forward. We don't get to take advantage of it unless we win. But I do think going forward, if we want quality candidates, we got to offer a little bit more than the volunteer time that we, because it's more than, it's a job. It's literally a job. Every day, I'm spending three or four hours on council. I might shouldn't have said that live in case somebody from my job is watching, but every day, I spend three or four hours of my job on council. So.
We're not saying anything.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, council, we have a motion on the floor. We, by Mayor Protem Kirkland. We have a second from Councilmember Fosser. I see no other discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Councilmember Meyer?
No.
Councilmember Plunkett?
See what you did. I should abstain a little while, though. But I don't think, I don't think we can abstain. So I'll say no.
Thank you, council. Motion fails with the dissenting votes coming from Mayor Protem Kirkland and the, and Councilmember Fosser. We will move to 3B. Dissenting vote is not exactly the right language, is it? The opposing, the opposing view. The, move to 3B. Consider an act upon Charter Amendment decriminalizing certain amounts of marijuana and possibly calling for a special election November 5, 2024. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. As you are aware, we received a petition calling for the decriminalization of certain amounts of marijuana. That amount would affect persons who were caught to be in possession of four ounces or less. In your packet was a letter from the police chief who I would like to address the council on some potential pitfalls of the council voting to put this on the ballot. So Chief Stefanik.
Welcome, Chief Stefanik.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I wrote the memo just to basically give you an idea of how it would affect our police department. I'm not here to sway people's opinion on whether marijuana laws should be changed or or not changed. The will of the voters is always to be respected. However, in this case, I feel that you can't change or circumvent state law through city measures. And I think that needs to be addressed at the state level, not at the expense of the city. So I put forth the memo just to give you an idea of some of the things that the department is looking at in regarding the decriminalization of marijuana measure. So the first one, just to summarize quickly, is that the only agency that would be affected by this measure would be the officers with the city of Bastrop Police Department. would be the officers with the City of Bastrop Police Department. Uh, Bastrop County, for example, can come into the city limits. Um, they can basically stop for the same things that we can, um, but they would not have to abide by the city ordinance. So it would, uh, the point here is, it would just be for our agency. Um, I, I then reiterated that state law requires that the peace officers with the department, um, since we're licensed by the state, we have to follow state rules when it comes to marijuana enforcement. Um, our current practice, even though, uh, typically, depending on the, the amount of marijuana, um, usually it's an arrestable offense, our current practice is to cite and release. The decriminalizing of marijuana would actually take away our option of, of giving a citation. Uh, let's see, and then there's a couple other things. I, I reiterated that the local government code states that, um, basically, the governing body of a municipality may adopt, enforce, or maintain an ordinance by rule. It is, cause I don't have a nice voice. Um, it's, so basically, that the, uh, let's see, the governing body of a municipality may adopt, enforce, or maintain an ordinance by rule only if the ordinance or rule is consistent with state law. So I, out of everything that I listed on here, um, a- and we actually do not receive a lot of calls for service for marijuana. Ours is actually a pretty low volume. Um, but out of everything on here, I think the, the largest point for us was that we did not want to be in violation of state law, and for us to be in violation of state law and potentially look at facing lawsuits um, would also affect maybe our grant status if this, the state does decide to sue the City of Bastrop for something like this. Any questions?
Councilmember Plunkett.
And of course, I'll, uh, refer to Alan again, but, um, it's my understanding, because this is a petition, we have a ministerial duty to, uh, to approve this regardless. I, um, now, however, if that, and I guess we should verify that's the case, correct?
That is true. Councilmember Plunkett, Mayor, members of the council, uh, our particular charter allows for citizens to submit petitions calling for amendments to our charter, and if the petition meets the requirements listed in the petition, the council has no choice but to order the election. Uh, city staff, consultation with our office concluded that the petition did meet the requirements under the charter, and therefore it needs to be ordered, and today's the last day to do that for November twenty twenty-four.
So my point to that is, um, I mean, we could receive a petition, um, saying that, you know, any illegal activity, you know, is now legal in, in Bastrop, even though state law would circumvent it. So my impression is that regardless of whether this passes or fails, it has no effect on your, your office-
Or enforce it.
In that, you know, um, but again, I can-
Yeah, so based on what, um, the attorney said, we're well aware of that. They, the, the purpose of my memo was just to basically outline the effects that it would have. Um, you know, if, if there's room for discussion, or, um, basically, I just wanted to present how it would affect our department, um, not necessarily say, hey, don't do this, or you should be doing that. Um, that's not my place. It was just to inform everybody how it would affect the department.
Thank you. You have a, any other questions, comments for our city manager or for our police chief?
Madam City Manager. Uh, I have a question for, um, city attorney. We have several cities in our jurisdiction that have been sued. Um, some plus or minus. Can you address the council on what the results of some of those were specifically? I believe it's Elgin.
Certainly, City Manager. Mayor and Council, there, there have been multiple lawsuits across the state for these types of initiatives. Some of them have been amendments to the charter, as we're discussing in Bastrop. Others have been an initiative which would have obligated the council to adopt an ordinance in effect, doing the same thing. Uh, for the cities that have adopted those charter provisions or ordinances, uh, they've often looked at a lawsuit by the state of Texas in the form of the Attorney General's Office. In most of those cases, the state has been effective. Uh, only in City of Austin has the City of Austin been able to keep their regulation. There's some slight nuance in how they actually enforce those rules. Either way, whether we put a rule in our charter or we put an ordinance in our code of ordinances, as the chief correctly stated, we cannot change what state law is. Any rule that we do put in place will affect only Bastrop PD. It will not affect, for example, the Sheriff's Department or DPS, and the level of compliance with such an ordinance or charter provision is something we won't know until after the election. While there's questions about the legality of this proposition, courts are not going to intervene at this point. The state of Texas is not going to intervene at this point. Uh, what they've shown us is this gets to go before the voters. It's only if the voters approve this proposition that we'll then be looking at the legalities of it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, so if you were to stop somebody today with four ounces, what would happen?
Typically, and, and circumstances are always hard to, to kind of dictate, but more than likely, we would issue the citation and release on scene. Um, for four ounces, usually it would be a Class A misdemeanor. We would, you, we're supposed to arrest and take people to jail. However, the citation is just our, our typical standard practice. It's much easier, um, to give them a citation and send them on their way and than it is to stand there and impound a car and take somebody physically to jail for a marijuana offense.
Did you, I, I didn't see where you put what a citation was. Is there, um, do they have to go to court, or is it like getting a ticket and you have to pay?
Yes. So, so typically, what we do is we give them a ticket and, and they have to show up in municipal court, depending on the circumstances. State law says that we should be arresting for that amount and taking to jail. Uh, depending on how this goes through, um, in essence, it would almost take away our citation abilities, and so the only option we would have is to arrest at that point.
Wait. So, I mean, I think we have to, we have to vote to put it on the ballot based on the way that it's written and it's gonna be a charter amendment. I, I don't think we have a choice in that, but what you're saying is that you can, you will no longer be able to slap him on the hand with a citation. It will be automatic jail?
It, it depends on how, I guess, our ordinance is written, but ultimately, if, if, if it's decriminalized in the city limits and we can't provide them with a citation, state law says that we have to arrest. So we can't slap you on the hand and give you a citation. We would have to arrest under state law.
I thought the petition language states you can't be arrested or given a citation for four ounces. I thought that was-
And it may, but that's part of the issue, is that we are state-certified licensed peace officers and we follow state law.
So the city or the police department would just do what Elgin apparently did, according to this memo, um, and agree to drop, to not enforce the ordinance?
I don't wanna say that at the end without having to confer with the, the dis- the prosecuting attorneys. So it would be something that we would get with, um, like the district attorney's office, uh, obviously the city attorney, so I don't wanna give you a definite, uh, definitive answer and say we're not enforcing it, but at this point, we would probably not enforce it because we have to enforce state law.
So I, I would hope that if, if it goes to the voters and it, and the voters vote for it, I, I would hope we wouldn't go that drastic. I would hope that the city would work with the city manager and council to come up with something that may not follow it, um, in totality, but also not go to the extreme of arresting someone. And I understand that there's litigation. I, I, I actually have heard that, um, the cities that were sued, um, that the cases were dropped. Um, so I'm shocked to read that there's something different from what I was heard, heard, but I'm not surprised by it. But I, I would hope that we would not say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna just start arresting you.
It, it, it's kind of hard. I mean, it, it's a very circumstantial thing. If I pull you over and I have a, I guess, a roach of marijuana, and then I pull you over and you've got four ounces, there's, there's a bit of a difference there, but at that point, we don't have the discretion if it's decriminalized in the city of Bastrop. And so our, our, our option is to follow state law, since we're state certified. Um, now, if we arrest you and you turn around and walk out of jail the next day and the charges are dropped, that's different on the back end. Currently, our practice is to say, here's your citation, be on your way. Um, and that's what's taken away from us.
But that's outside of state law. So state law says that they are to be arrested. What, is there a minimum amount of arrest for, by state law? We're talking four ounces. Is one ounce arrestable?
Yes, so two ounces or less is a Class B misdemeanor, so, or, is there a minimum? Yes.
So we're saying now that four ounces, you give them a citation, they show up for court, whatever, they pay a fine. That's overriding state law. Um, so why go to the extreme if the petition is voted by the voters?
So I-
Can I chime in, Mayor?
Sure.
I'd like a shot at answering-
Yes, please. I had a question to go along with it, too.
I, I, I think a, a better summary is that for certain classifications of state law offenses like this one, the state law says you shall arrest the person. Um, that, that is true for certain types of traffic violations, but then it goes on to say in state law that instead of arresting, you have the option of issuing a ticket. Voters, necessarily about decriminalizing the possession of marijuana, it's about limiting the enforcement options that are available to Bastrop law enforcement. Some options are taken off the table, then other options are gonna be required by state law. Is that-
That's correct.
Thanks for the clarity.
More thing-
Go ahead.
Cause I, I owe this, I owe this to our city manager. She's asked about a specific city, and I didn't mention that city. Uh, it's slightly different down the road in Elgin, Mayor and Council. Uh, the proposition was initiative, so it was initiating an ordinance. The voters approved it. The ordinance went into the code of ordinances. The Texas Attorney General's Office sued the City of Elgin. The City of Elgin settled with the Attorney General's Office, and through a consent decree approved by the court, agreed not to enforce their new ordinance. So City Manager, that's what occurred down the road.
So for that, sorry, um, that there's going to be a path forward. We, we may take a action, to your point, Councilmember Lee, we may take action, but there will be legal ramifications down the road, and we may end up in the very same spot we are today where she's not really enforcing. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that, that we're going through the necessary because it is a ministerial action at this point, but, you know, we're gonna go the roundabout way to where she is today.
Mr. Attorney, is, uh, does this impact our municipal court in any way, shape, or form?
Uh, I, I, I think with the arrestable offenses, those are probably gonna go to the county.
Uh, yes, sir. Anything arrestable goes to, um, the DA's office. It's only Class C misdemeanors or below, so citations essentially is what goes to municipal court. We, we do not have very many of them, um, so the fiscal impact would not be anything of concern.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. Um, I have a motion if, if discussion is done.
You have a floor?
Um, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to accept the charter amendment, um, to be placed on the November fa- fifth ballot, so the people may vote.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer, a very hasty second from Councilmember Fossler. I see no further discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary of Field, call the row.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. I am so sorry. I, there was a one citizen comment on this, and I'm going to provide him that, uh, notice. Uh, Mr. Herb Goldsmith had voiced his support of this action by council, so Mr. Goldsmith is gonna be extremely happy that we took action even without his comments. We will move on to, uh, item four A. The city council shall convene and adjourn the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five, one point zero seven one and five, five, one point zero seven four, to discuss the duties of the city attorney. It is six twenty-five. Council is in executive session. It is seven twelve, and we're back into open session. Uh, for clarity, we are in our zeal to get this right. We never voted on the full, uh, ordinance relative to, uh, our Charter Review Commission amendments. Uh, I will entertain a motion at this point in time.
I make a motion, uh, to approve all other propositions that were not voted on, um, prior. We only voted on Proposition K, so I would like to include all the other propositions to be voted on at this jun- and the marijuana.
And the K and I.
K and I, excuse me. So we need to exclude K and I and include all the other propositions. A through L.
Second.
Thank you for the clarity. Thank you for the second. We have a motion from Councilmember Meyer. We have a second from Councilmember Fossler. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary of Field, call the row.
I'm sorry, the motion was by-
Councilmember Meyer, and seconded by Councilmember Fossler.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim.
I forgot the name.
Kirkland.
Kirkland.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carried.
We have a unanimous, uh, vote. Thank you, Council. We'll move to, uh, uh, item four A. There will be no action, uh, needed or no action required for this executive session item. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We are adjourned.